My fear is that, I don't know if it's a legitimate fear, but I have seen in other cases that work continues and then occupancy moves on. That won't happen here because there was, you know, there's...
Good point.
I would guess the certificate of occupancy would not be issued for this project because we have not, in terms of procedurally, that the historic commission wouldn't sign off on that. I think, I say that because there are some significant, very significant items that need to be addressed with this application or with what's actually been constructed as opposed to what was approved in the application. And I think acting in good faith on both sides, I just wanted to understand what power we might have to encourage or discourage them from...
Okay. I'm not sure, I'll have to defer to staff as to whether a stop-work order has actually been issued. If one has been issued, any work that's inconsistent with the stop-work order is actually a separate violation under the code. So I'll defer to staff as to whether one has been issued or whether this is appropriate time to issue one.
It has not been issued.
I mean, certainly the applicant proceeds at their own risk anytime that something like this happens, but I just wanted to get some of those things on the table or cleared up for the benefit of the applicant. Oftentimes, because these things, people are spending hard-earned money to do this and contractors have to remedy things from time to time. This is no small item we're considering today.
Would it be correct to say that your motion might say something like, "Move to defer and require the applicant to return to the commission in 30 days with accurate drawings"? Just trying to think of a way to simplify it.
That sounds good.
Yeah.
I think so, and I think further encouraging the applicant to address significant deviations and consider more than just changing some roof shapes and things like that from the plans would certainly be my admonition.
Okay.
So that we don't find ourselves in the same position 30 days from then.
Another question for when they get their, in the codes permitting, they need to get approval from MHCC before any use in occupancy. I just wanted to clarify that one more time. Okay. Yep.
And to the extent that the commission has any concern about it, I mean, you might, it might be well to issue the stop-work order to ensure that, because this is coming back again kind of in a non-traditional way. It's not, so I'm not sure where it is in the pipeline or how those approvals are being sought at this point, because we really have something where it's already built, they've already kind of been trucking along here. And because of an inspection that revealed that some work was not comporting with what your approval had been, now we're back here. So I just want to make sure what mechanism, and maybe I should ask, from staff's perspective, what mechanisms are in place to make sure that it doesn't, and is it property issue a stop-work order to make sure that those mechanisms are triggered?
Yes, as the chairman said, they would need to have us sign off on a use in occupancy.
Okay.
But, you know, to, for, to make everything clear, a stop-work order would be appropriate.
Okay.
Especially if the motion is that you want to wait 30 days to get drawings, so that you send the clear message that no work should be taking place within those 30 days.
Certainly no occupancy.
And that's certainly reasonable. You know, there's not a 90-day, there's a 30-day within that timeline, so that seems...
And I asked for that clarification because the staff's recommendation is 60 days to remedy, and I think that's not, we're talking about 30 days to start to remedy, not 60 days to like be done fixing it. There's just a lot to be fixed. It could happen, but I just, I want to make sure we were clear in how we decided and what we're expecting of the applicant.
Okay. Are we really clear? Are we all clear? Okay. Will somebody make that motion clearly?
If you'd like, I can read it out, and then if someone agrees with it, that can be your motion.
That's perfect, sure. I suggest that.
"Move to defer and require the applicant to return to the commission in 30 days with accurate drawings that significantly address the violation and for staff to issue a stop-work order."
So moved.
There's first and a second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Not opposed, the motion passes. Thank you for the discussion.
All right, the next case to be heard is 1823 Fifth Avenue North. 1823 Fifth Avenue North is a circa 1930 bungalow. It is a contributing structure to the Salem Town neighborhood conservation zoning overlay. What you're receiving now was an email from the council member that staff didn't receive until at the very beginning of the meeting and then for later the applicant's presentation. So this application is to construct in addition to the historic house and two single-story detached outbuildings. The plan also includes altering an existing window opening on the right-side facade. And as proposed, the addition will more than double the footprint of the historic house. So the existing house has a footprint of approximately 1,193 square feet, including the front porch. The addition proposed is approximately 1,408 square feet. The footprint, as well as the depth of the addition, more than double that of the historic house, which is not something that you have approved recently except in cases of exceptionally small historic houses. And just to note, this case is similar to one that you looked at right next door at 1821 Fifth Avenue North last month. The addition is inset properly from the rear corners of the historic house and meets all setbacks of the zoning code. The outbuildings are located at the rear of the lot and also meet all setbacks. The proposed addition will be one and a half stories. It will rise two feet taller than the historic house, but have an eve height similar to that of the historic house. So the design guidelines allow for a two-foot ridge raises for side gable houses with a hipped roof like this. It would not be eligible for a ridge raise, but staff finds that an addition that is two feet taller could be appropriate if the rest of the addition's scale is subordinate to the historic house. Here is the right-side elevation. The addition, as stated before, will be one and a half stories. Dormers are incorporated on the second level of the addition, and those are set in two feet from the wall below as required by the guidelines. While the historic house is single-story, staff finds that a one-and-a-half-story addition could be appropriate since the additional half-story is accommodated in only two additional feet. In addition, the addition takes advantage of the slope on the lot so that the foundation and floor line sit lower than the existing house. The applicant proposes to elongate an existing window opening on the right-side facade near the rear of the house and to add a door near the midpoint. Staff finds that both of these changes on the right-side facade can be appropriate since they are located on the side and at or beyond the midpoint. And here is the left-side facade and the rear, which also includes a dormer. Staff, again, finds the footprint is not appropriate in this case since the house is not exceptionally small. In addition, the project is proposed to be taller than the historic house, and having a footprint that is also larger than that of the historic home makes the overall height and scale of the addition inappropriate. Staff recommends that the addition, including all covered porches, have a footprint no larger than that of the historic house, which is approximately 1,193 square feet. And here are the elevations for the detached outbuildings. They're a single-story and meet all design guidelines. They will not include dwelling units. And in conclusion, staff recommends approval of the project with four conditions. The first is regarding the footprint, that the footprint of the addition, including all covered porches, have a footprint no larger than 1,193 square feet, which is approximately that of the historic house. Two, staff approve the final details, dimensions and materials of windows, doors, trim, roof color, and garage doors prior to purchase and installation. Three, that the HVAC be located behind the house or on either side beyond the midpoint. And four, utility meters locate, be located on the sides or rear of the building. Alternative mechanical and utility locations must be approved prior to an administrative sign-off on the building permits. That's coming up because the addition will convert this single-family home into two-family, and there have been some issues with doing that with NES policy. So that's just to work with them to make sure that it's an appropriate location. So with these four conditions, staff finds that the project can meet the Salem Town neighborhood conservation zoning overlay design guidelines. Yes? Yes? I can't even...
I'm sorry. We should all be all know. Nope, that one.
Oops, sorry. Yeah, thank you, Melissa. Okay, we got questions, right?
Yeah, thanks, Melissa. So the, I just, this, I know we have approved additions that are bigger. Is it because of this particular zoning overlay that that's not allowed, or?
No.
It's the footprint of the whole side, or?
Right, and in the cases where you have approved additions that more than double the footprint of the house, or at least in more recent times, those have been for exceptionally small houses, so I think 1,000 square feet or less. This is closer to 1,200 square feet with the porches. And it's fairly similar to a case that you looked at last month with a similar recommendation, which is why this is before you.
Okay, thanks.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Okay, applicant, are you here? Name and address, please.
My name is Jeff Zeitlin, 404 Taylor Street. Before you, you have a little booklet and also an email from Councilman O'Connell supporting the project as it is in front of y'all today. We are seeking approval with a 1,319 square foot footprint. The existing house is very small, as Melissa had said. The footprint is 1,193, but the actual house is right at 900 square feet, 900 and change. Historic has approved all the aspects of the house with the exception of the length, and we are in support of all the recommendations that staff has made except number one. The addition that is proposed is two feet on each side narrower than the historic house. The proposed total length on the historic house and the addition on the, as in before you, is 94.4 feet. If it was to be the same footprint, it would be 86.7. We are asking this, it's a 4% increase. This is figured, taking a total length of existing and addition and divided by the 160 linear feet of the size of the lot. The guidelines allow for 1,193. We are asking to increase the footprint to only 1,319. This would be an increase of 126 square feet. It represents a 9% increase. As Melissa said, y'all have approved them before on extremely small houses. I would consider this an extremely small house. I understand that the economic situation is not something y'all consider. When I contracted this house, my original thought that this would, because of the condition of the house, would be allowed to be torn down. The staff recommended not to. And so I worked within, trying to keep the house and making this a situation that would work economically, not so much for me. Whether this board approves this particular, what's before you, I'm a builder, I can move one to the next house. The gentleman who owns the house is, lives with himself, a disabled sister, and a daughter. He's trying to improve his situation. If the commission does not approve this, his house will probably be unsellable, just because of the economics of what he could get for the smaller house. If this is not approved, I would not be, I could not move forward with staff's recommendation. I understand and respect the guidelines of, and the guidelines are there. My brother has always said on bad architecture, sometimes it's a 10 pounds of manure in a five-pound bag, and that's why you have the guidelines you do. But I think if you look at this as the project on its own, it fits. It fits with the house to the right, which was a historic house that was allowed to be torn down, and there's a new house, and the one to the left is substantially bigger than this house. And then I've put there before you the drawings of both the proposed house and the house that would meet the guidelines. If you look at the right-side elevations, I would actually say the increase in length helps the historic design of the design line lines, because if you look at the roof to the left, it feels sandwiched in between. And if you, the little bit of distance between the roof on the, in the middle, I think is proportionally more appropriate than the smaller house. I appreciate your consideration. Again, Councilman O'Connell personally met me out there. He looked at it, and he is in support of what's before you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Zeitlin. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Oh, open public hearing. All right, thank you. Please give us your name and address.
Angus Luther. Angus Luther Moore. I reside and part owner of 1823 Fifth Avenue North. As Mr. Zeitlin said, what we're trying to do, I'd like for y'all to consider even the plans that he has now. Councilman O'Connell met with us, and he looked over everything. Only thing I'm trying to do, I'm trying to sell the property, so that me and my little daughter that I have take custody and take care of, and my elderly sister who I moved down here from California, originally it was her house and my older brother's house that originally bought the house. And I am her caretaker, her POA, everything, and our house, I mean, you can live in it. I mean, but it really doesn't suit our needs anymore. I mean, and the house is such bad condition that we cannot afford to do all the refurbishing and everything it really needs. It's best for us to sell the house, find another location. And with the opportunity of the growth of this town and everything, and especially that neighborhood over there, I really don't see, but still I respect the historical aspect of the overlay now. Have to do that. I just wish I would consider his proposal and everything so that we can proceed in doing this. It would do me and my family a great deal if we can do this. Basically, that's about it. I mean, I don't want to go into the condition of the house, because as I said, to me it needs to be tore down. But, okay. You know, I'm living in it. But I would just be so much better for the lifestyle and everything to continue and do something and proceed further and do other things. So I wish I would be able to consider his proposal on this house. Basically, that's about it, you know? It's up to you. I hope y'all have mercy on us and consider everything. As I said, we've had the councilman and everything, and he has looked at our plans, and he agreed with us that he sees no problem, but it is up to you. I thank you. God bless.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Moore.
I'm Preston Quirk, architect, working with Jeff on this. I let Jeff address the design issues, and I think he did a very good job of doing that. I just wanted to make a quick comment that Jeff's been a good client to work with. I think he's done some very nice, sensitive additions in Salem Town, Germantown areas. He's not one that you see in front of you for violations on construction, not following plans. I also, I think you, a lot of you probably know, a lot of my things come through here on consent agenda, so I'm not real well-versed in what you've approved in the past that was over footprint, but I'll just say that this is a very small amount over what the existing footprint is, and would appreciate if you could consider approving it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Quirk.
Question, Preston. Was there a, it seems a conscious decision, you stepped in from the sides of the house, which, it's a one-story house, you stepped in from the sides. Was there, was it a conscious decision not to bump out, to respect the historic house and to take it back a little longer? Something of a, I didn't know if that was a comment from staff or if that was just a conscious decision to keep the roof form and respect the front house?
I think the best answer is a little bit of both of that. I think part of it was initiated by staff, working with Melissa on this. Jeff had meetings on that, but I think staff initially said, you know, if you come in a foot on each side, we'd feel better about it, and we had no problem following that recommendation, so that's...
And then, but then to come back out would, just wasn't, to come in for a bit and then go back out, it just wasn't, that wasn't part of the design decisions?
We could have done it from a design standpoint, but staff was somewhat adamant that they liked it better if the whole thing stayed, stayed even going, stayed, had the inset going back.
Sure, okay.
And I guess to your point, Ben, I mean, if we did come out a foot on either side, we might have more footage and less length, so...
Just curious, yeah, how that, those things play out in different, each case is somewhat unique, but I was curious how that, on this particular case, how that would, had come to...
Try to work with staff whenever possible, and appreciate their help on things.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else for public hearing? Okay, we're going to close public hearing. Commissioners? I do have a clarification there on staff. On page one of the recommendation, it has a square footage, and then on page 17, there's a different square footage. Could you just clarify that, please?
Yes, go with the one on the first page.
Okay.
It was a typo.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Thank you. Which is important, so clear.
And I have a question, I'm not sure who to best address this to, but in the booklet that was handed out, on the left-hand side of the booklet and then the right-hand side for both the plans and the elevations, one says smaller units and the other one says larger units. It's two different plans and two different elevations, and I don't understand what's going on there.
Come on up to the front again.
We actually took the time to design it to the staff recommending guidelines, but when we did that, we found that we could not make it economical to make the project work. When we first contracted with the owner, we had had a contract price of $300,000. With the plan that's before you, it's been reduced to $250,000. If we were to go with staff recommendations, it would, the value, if you take percentage of sellability of a lot versus the house, it would be under $200,000. So the reason we have the drawings on the left was, it was our intent that when staff made the recommendation of the footprint was to honor that, but because of economics, we just could not make that work. So that's, the one on the right is the one, the plan that's before you.
Thank you.
I have a clarification for staff. As the porch on the smaller unit, the application that we're looking at, which is the smaller units, is a covered porch, not a, it doesn't, the one on the larger has no columns, and the porch in the back on the smaller one, and you may have made an, your recommendation on not, you know, it's not jumping the fence between these two, but I think, so that we can understand if we ask that the applicant comply with item one of the staff's recommendation summary, that seems like a lot of porch.
Yes.
And I wonder if what's represented in the drawings is included in that calculation. I just want to make sure we and they know what we're approving, if that's the, I took note of everything that's under a porch and how you calculate it from the front to the back of the existing plus the front to the back of the new.
Yes, we, in our calculations, we included all porches, so even, and we haven't, I'm just now seeing this plan for the smaller units, so the, showing a covered porch on the rear, that would be included as well, just as we did include the covered stoop on the rear of what was proposed, even though it's much smaller.
So, is that what you're asking? Well, I just, in the calculation of what the applicant handed out in the smaller, that porch under roof is included in the 1,193 square feet, or it is not?
It is.
Okay.
And their square footage is 1,319, including the porch?
Correct.
Front and back, if any.
Just a, just a comment, I guess, I do feel like that the house is subservient enough, you know, based off just, you know, a little bit of the eye test, but also just 100 square I will say, Preston, though, you almost made the work look too good, though. The smaller one, it seems like it does kind of work, honestly. That's the only reason why I'm a little hesitant about going forward with it, but, yeah, it's almost kind of like a difference either way. Is it a deal breaker one way or is it a deal breaker the other way? But I'm still just reviewing it a little bit more, but that's just kind of where I am right now.
You stunted us.
It does seem like such a nominal amount of square footage that I don't know if there's any further reduction that can take place within the porches or other space to allow you to keep the larger plan as desired. But I would say I just wanted to commend you for the efforts that you've put forth thus far to preserve this house and to help to beautify and preserve the character of the neighborhood. And upon reading Councilman O'Connell's recommendation, I do agree that even maintaining the larger amount of square footage, that I think that the project could go forward as proposed, but again, that's based on what I'm seeing here, but it is the pleasure of the majority of the commission.
Robin, can you clue me into this? In past interpretations on single-story additions to single-story houses, stepping in, stepping out, you know, coming, not getting wider than the house, but certainly having, hyphen, I think is the way we described it in the past. What has been the policy, remind me of what the policy is or the interpretation generally is. generally is on houses. I think very obvious on this one by it staying narrower that it's less house behind house, but.
So is your question?
Do we require applicants on a single-story addition to a single-story house to make the entire addition a foot narrower, or do we see, have we approved some that step in and then step back out?
Yes, they have stepped back out, and I'm not aware that we gave the recommendation for it not to step back out. We just responded to what was given to us.
Yeah, and I guess I'm, I wanted to make sure before I, you know, there's, it seems as if there is, this is an, would be an argument in the applicant's favor, I guess, of, as designed or as proposed for the bigger, that there's approximately 80 square feet, that's 80-ish square feet that's kind of left on the table by not bringing the house back out, which I think likely results in something that is more respectful of the historic house by, you know, not doing the hyphen and stepping back out. I'm not sure if that's a legitimate reason for, you know, allowing more on the back of the house when we start splitting hairs like that and you have another applicant say, well, you did it here. But I would just point that out to other commissioners to consider in terms of this evaluation.
Someone ready to make a motion, or are there other comments? I mean.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
With respect to 1823 Fifth Avenue North, I move that we adopt the recommendations of staff in regards to number two, three, and four. However, we do allow the applicant to proceed with the larger footprint totaling 1,319 feet.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? There is no opposition. So your motion passes, and the applicant is approved. So, thank you. We've already closed public hearing. Thank you, thank you.
218 Mockingbird Road. First of all, you have received public comment regarding this project. This is an application for construction of a two-story detached accessory dwelling unit at the rear of the lot. The proposed new outbuilding, DADU, meets the design guidelines for massing roof form materials design, as well as the general requirements for outbuildings and DADUs. The proposed location is 10 feet from the rear property line, 14 feet from the house, and one foot proposed from the left-side property line. Because of the atypical lot shape and size, staff finds the reduced distance between the house and outbuilding to be appropriate in this case. However, at the square footage that's submitted, the side setback requirement is five feet. That's part of staff's recommendation to keep the setback requirement of five feet. The applicant has told staff that he is willing to reduce the footprint to 700 square feet and abide by all the required setbacks in this case, which would be changed to three feet at the reduced footprint. However, we've been given to understand that neighbors have questions about this project, so here we are. These are the elevations proposed. Again, it meets the design guidelines in all respects with the exception of the setback. Recommendation summary. Staff recommends approval of the detached accessory dwelling unit with the conditions of staff approval of materials and that the outbuilding is located five feet from the left-side property line to meet setback requirements. With these conditions, the DADU will meet Section 2B-H of the Cherokee Park Design Guidelines and 1716-030-G of code with respect to detached accessory dwelling units. The applicant is here, and maybe neighbors too. I'm not sure.
Okay. Any questions to Paul at the moment? Okay, none. Applicant, please come forward in your name and address, please.
Tom Mayhew, 218 Mockingbird Road.
Thank you.
I had told Paul that I wanted to withdraw today and redraw and submit for the three-foot setback in a smaller unit, and then I have some neighbors here that wanted to speak. I think about a border wall that I built at the back of the property. So, so I can't, so he alerted me that they had complained about some stuff, so I came to defend myself.
Okay, so are you withdrawing? Are you, I mean, deferring?
Yes.
You're deferring, okay. Do we need to vote on a deferral?
The issue with this is that there are.
There's public hearing.
Yeah, there is a public hearing that's needed because there are neighbors who disagree with the project.
Okay, so can he defer, and we still continue to listen to public hearing?
Right, if you defer, then you wouldn't have a public hearing today. And you can defer by agreement, because this is a typical application that you would normally hear. So, but you don't have to defer. You know, you could subject that to a vote. The chair could call for a vote on the deferral, and it either goes up or down. And if you go down and it doesn't pass for the deferral, then you have a public hearing today.
Can I make maybe a statement of fact, and we can see if the applicant would be willing to do that? It sounds like he's here to hear his neighbors.
I'll just add to that, that what the applicant has proposed would be able to be administratively issued. So my recommendation is not to defer, because then we're in the same situation. I think it may be best to move forward with a public hearing.
To that point, if we hear the case today, even if it is not all, the conditions to the applicant's liking is not to his liking or what he wants to build, it sounds like there's a material change in an application that he could come back, just as he was, if we deferred next month, and really, there's not any harm done. If we go ahead and hear the case, and folks are given the opportunity to speak, I think we're kind of saying the same thing, so I would just put that out there.
And Leo, can correct me if I'm wrong here, or if this is a bad idea? In the light of just saving everyone extra process and time, I know you don't have drawings in front of you for a 700-square-foot outbuilding, but it would look the same, but be 700 square feet with a three-foot setback? Perhaps that is what they could review today? Because if it is simply deferred, and then we have to bring it back with what you all know he's presenting, he's proposing.
Neighbors have to come back.
Let's back up just a little bit, because I heard another word, other than deferral, when the applicant came up. I heard the word withdrawal. And he can withdraw his application today. And then, if he withdraws his application today, he can always come back and seek approval of a different application. Now, how that affects the public hearing is if he moves to withdraw his application, we really don't vote on that. But we still would not move forward with a public hearing, because there's no application on which to be heard. So.
And also, in consideration for those who might have heard, you know, where I might have been speaking for public hearing, we did get public comment via email. So those were duly noted.
Correct. Those are in your record for the board. I think staff has one question. Hold on just a second. Take that question.
I know, I think we could keep going. Yeah, I agree. I just, as a chair, I'd like to suggest that.
Yes, I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure I had addressed all the staff's questions, but I'm going to defer to her to lay it all out for us.
Well, chair consideration is to go ahead and hear it, and let's go ahead and do as usual. And let's see how far we go with it.
May I make a suggestion that what you review today, if the applicant is amenable to this, that the condition be that the square footage of the building not exceed 700 square feet, and that the side setback be at least three feet? That's what you were proposing?
Yeah, I was looking at the guidelines, and I was thinking, um, under 750.
I think.
So we're amending our recommendation?
And that's allowed? Okay.
We're putting the stipulation on them that that was what we would be comfortable with. That's what we would approve.
Okay.
That's how I see it.
All right, so we're going to hear the project. And the owner, the applicant, has already spoken. Staff has already made their recommendation, and so we're going to open public hearing. And please state your name and address, please.
I'm Grace Renshaw, and I live at 220 Mockingbird. Road next door to 2018.
Can you say that one more time?
I'm Grace Renshaw, and I live at 220 Mockingbird, next to 2018, I mean, 218. I ask that you approve Mr. Mayhew's application for a two-story garage apartment with one important condition, a required setback of at least eight feet from his property line. My carport sits directly on that property line in the same location as the original garage built in 1930 when our house was built. Our house, parking structure, and driveway have been there for 90 years. They have been there for 20, they had been there for 20 years when the original house at 2018 was built in 1950. 20 years ago, we were permitted to rebuild our dilapidated garage as a carport in the same footprint using bricks harvested from the original garage. We corrected two encroachments, but our parking structure still is on the property line. This is common in Cherokee Park with houses built before setbacks were standard. The three-feet setback makes space so tight that the left-side door Tom plans for his DADU will open right by my carport. If the required setback is not increased, I'm concerned of the safety hazard to anyone using that door when we are pulling into our carport or if someone suddenly comes out. Tom has two small children. More space between structures involving cars is safer. With only three feet between structures, his roof will also overhang our carport roof. Even if he installs gutters, we will still get water runoff onto the roof of our carport from his much taller, larger structure. A three-foot setback assumes buildings on separate lots will be at least six feet apart, but that's not the case here. If two structures on separate lots are three feet apart, does that provide adequate egress for fire and maintenance personnel? An eight-foot setback would provide that, and Tom has adequate space to provide eight feet. Please add an eight-foot setback as a condition before approving this proposal. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else? If you do, please come up to the front there and, so that we can hear your comments, please.
Sorry, I didn't know. I'm Catherine McGill, and I live in the home behind Tom Mayhew's home, 219 Mayfair Road. And I really oppose his being able to build what he wants to build there for two serious reasons. One, the water drainage problem in between the properties, and also on my property, if he builds that there, will be very serious. He's already constructed a wall, a five-foot cinder block wall that has caused a serious drainage problem, not in my opinion, but Metro Water has been out and told me this. And he also poured it on top of the sewer line. So the situation is that the way the properties are so close together, and the tile roof that he is going to put on his house has no gutters. And Ms. Renshaw said that if he puts them on, great, you know, might help, but three properties come together, or actually, four properties come together at that one little corner, and there's no drainage. I mean, there's absolutely none. The second issue is if you look at his drawing that he's proposed, he has the, and I've spoken with Mr. Mayhew about this. There is a tree that's 40 inches, 65-to-80-foot tree, that's an old-growth tree that is about 18 inches from where he wants to build his garage. And I was concerned that the tree would die, and I'm not a tree hugger, but the truth is, if it dies, it's going to create a serious hazard problem, because there's no way to get to it to take it down if he puts it there. So I contacted Druid Tree Service and spoke with Cabot Cameron, who did a safety assessment. And he said that if the, and I've included this, which I just sent it this morning, and I apologize. He included in his safety assessment that the tree would most definitely not survive the event whatsoever.
It's time, thank you. It's time, thank you.
I'm so sorry.
No, no apologies. No apologies.
So I just asked that you not do it.
Sure, thank you. Please come forward, those of you who want to speak right after.
Hi, my name is Randy Horick. My wife and I have lived at 220 Mockingbird for 31 years. For most of the time we've lived there, 218 has been a rental property, and it hasn't always been maintained. So I was glad that Tom and Joanne bought it from their landlords and improved it. We really like having them as neighbors, and they do need to have the ability to have a two-car detached garage on their property. But I felt kind of blindsided when I got this certified letter last week showing that the planned new garage was going to be right on top of our carport, one foot away. I was relieved when your staff member emailed me that Tom planned to reduce the size of the garage and would quote, "meet the required setback", is what your staffer's email said. So no hearing was necessary. And then I got blindsided again, which is part of the reason I'm speaking to you, because I assumed the required setback meant five feet. The email conveniently left out the fact that only a three-foot setback was now required. My wife found this out by continuing to ask questions. Otherwise, this would have sailed through, and we never would have known until the garage went up. I understand now that your process is you don't have to inform neighbors about those rules, which seems like a problem to me. I don't believe neighbors should be left out through processes that are opaque. And that's a real problem. But no thanks to your staff. I understand your rule says a three-foot setback is okay. That makes no logical sense to me that a five-foot setback would not apply here. If three feet is too close for a two-story, 24-foot-tall building, then it ought to be too close for a two-story, 24-foot-tall building that's slightly smaller, and it's still going to loom large over my carport enough to block out some of the afternoon sun. So the five-foot setback is what made sense to me. I would, hope you would approve it with that as the way you had planned to do the larger project, a minimum of five feet. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Ben Bailey, and my wife and I own the property right behind the Mayhews at 217 Mayfair Road. And basically, we just received a letter and sort of tried to catch up what's going on. And we don't mind the garage going in. We just want it to meet setbacks and make the rest of the neighbors happy in the neighborhood. The only concern is the wall. If it's built on a Metro right-of-way easement, what is that going to do with the runoff in that area? And so we would like for you to have at least, at least a five-foot or eight-foot setback on the property line, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we will close public hearing. Okay, yeah, sure. Thank you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the, before y'all close and we can't speak, if you.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that the, before y'all close and we can't speak, if you're concerned about the wall, it's four-foot tall on one end, four-foot-eight on the other, three-foot off from the center of the sewer, and I do have a, so, any questions on that? But I intend, and also, I intend to lower the height by three feet from the proposed drawing. And I'm wanting to be three-foot off the property line on the side. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions to the applicant since he has time? Okay? All right. We're going to close public hearing. Okay, commissioners?
Clarification for the staff, based on public comment and the applicant's request. Is the council, the council set setback requirements based on the current adoption of the daddoo, or is that...
No, the ordinance is set up, and it is available online, of course, and the design guidelines are as well. The ordinance is set up to allow you to determine what the correct setback is. And your policy has been, since, I think it was established, that you would follow the bulk standards unless there was some reason not to. Because these historic districts were all developed prior to any kind of bulk standards, and sometimes houses are already close to side setbacks. So what that says, for daddoo's particularly and for outbuildings, is the amount of side setback for the bulk standards is based on the size of the building. So he came in with a larger building, and so the five-foot setback was required, and then he proposed a building that was 700 square feet, which only required a three-foot setback.
Those bulk standards were voted on by the council and approved by the council, right? Not this board?
They were, yes.
Okay, just making everybody aware that that's a bulk standard, not necessarily a standard of this commission that we would be able to have, we could certainly petition the council to change it, but that is, that's where that comes from.
But to, hold on, open up a can of worms. We do have the authority to say what it is, so to kind of, not play devil's advocate, but yes, bulk standards is, you know, the minimums that we follow, but we have been given the authority to say, perhaps in this case, since there's already a structure, you know, so close, you know, maybe it does move, maybe we do want it to move further away for some space between, since there's a structure on the other property line that was built, you know, and, you know, every lot is different, every lot has different adjacent lots, and in this case, you know, there is a structure back there. So, you know, that's just to also think about for us.
Anyone else for that, or someone make a motion?
And just, and also, just for the applicant, I mean, I'm not sure who would deal with the wall, you know, situ, the wall situation, but that, that's not us, you know, unfortunately, you know, and I'm not sure who that would be, but we don't have any say over the construction of the wall. We wouldn't have looked at that, so, you know, Metro Water, you know, I'm not sure.
Or drainage.
Or drainage, again, you know, those aren't things that are under our purview.
Or trees.
Yes, as a commission, so just to make that clear to the public and the applicant. That's not under our watch.
Well said. Would you like to make a motion?
I don't know, I'd like to hear my other commissioner's thoughts on it, on the setback, just, you know, just it, just that there is an existing structure on the adjacent lot that's just right on the property line, and that's how these historic, you know, properties go. What, what are, I would just like to hear y'all's thoughts on it.
Like, you mean, it's grandfathered and because it's there?
Yeah, you know, so this is a new structure we're building, so that's, you know, we have control over where this new structure is to be built, whereas we don't, do not have control over where the existing structure on the adjacent lot was built, you know, so whether that, we think that that's correct, or we think that that impedes on a current property owner's, you know, right to build on their lot, you know, that, those are things I think we have to kind of talk through.
Okay, let's, yeah, let's talk that through.
I would tend to side with the property owner. I think to create something more punitive for one owner based on, albeit now it sounds as if, you know, the adjacent carport is on, on the, on the property line, or it's diagonal, so maybe the corner of it is on the property line. While practically, that might make good sense, I think there's a tough legal argument and hurdle for me to overcome to be punitive in that regard personally, but I, we do have that capability.
I agree. I feel like we should observe the bulk standard that's been set forth, especially if the property owner is willing to reduce the square footage to less than 700 square feet. He said he's going to reduce the height by three feet, and then to follow the given setback of three feet seems fair to me.
Yeah, I think it would be up, I mean, that, some of the public comment is noted, you know, if you've got a door that swings out from your garage and a three-foot stoop, it's pretty narrow, not enough for a fence if you wanted to put a fence up on the property line, and that's not part of the application, but that would certainly be, while he's permitted to put it within three feet of the side setback, may not be a good idea just because it's permitted, but that's up to the applicant.
Okay. Anyone else? Okay, let's move it. Let's move a motion. Unless you want to discuss it further. I think we've established some good guidelines on how, where we got there, and seems reasonable, so I think a motion is appropriate.
Robin, can you remind us kind of where we ended up with that?
So where we are right now is the conditions would be the footprint not to exceed 700 square feet, the outbuilding be located at least three feet from the side property line. Staff have a final approval of trim windows, doors, and roofing color, and then if you wanted to, you could also add that the building be three feet shorter, since that was something the applicant had mentioned doing.
In height, in height. Mm-hmm. Since you've already outlined that, can we just make a motion to that?
Yeah, we did it last time.
Yep. All right.
Okay, so moved with the addition of the, reducing an extra three feet per the applicant's suggestion.
Second?
Motion, first and second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Are any opposed? None opposed, the motion passes. Thank you.
You're popping. I'm making a proper motion today.
Next up on the agenda is 1606 16th Avenue South. It is a one-story brick cottage constructed circa 1930. The house contributes to the historic character of the South Music Row Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. The area is zoned OR 20, and many of the former residences in the South Music Row area are currently used for businesses. The application is to construct in addition to the historic building and to construct a rear outbuilding structure. Because the base zoning is OR 20, the rear structure is not considered to be a detached accessory dwelling unit. Excuse me. The rear structure requires a change in the rear setback from 20 feet to five feet. The outbuilding does meet the base zoning five-feet side setbacks, however, it does not meet the 20-foot rear setback that is typically required in OR 20 under base zoning. Sorry, got a tickle. The applicant is proposing a five-foot-two rear setback. Staff finds that the reduced rear setback to be appropriate because historically, outbuildings were located close to the alley. Pushing the structure closer to the alley also allows for more space in between the back of the house and the outbuilding. I just wanted to note that the commissioners were emailed copies of a letter expressing concern about the parking provided for this development. The site plan shows that the parking will be accommodated in the driveway, which runs from an existing curb cut back to the historic house and into the rear yard. The commission does not have a say in the number of parking spaces required, but the commission can review things like the location of parking pads, the materials of parking pads, et cetera, and the configuration. So here is the side facade of the addition in the proposed outbuilding. The rear addition is one story in height and is inset one foot from the both back corners of the house. It has a depth of just 12 feet, and is approximately 300 square feet. Overall, staff finds this rear addition to be appropriate and modestly scaled for the historic house. The outbuilding will be used as a dwelling unit, but as I mentioned earlier, is not considered a daddoo because the site zoning of OR 20 is not really accommodated for in the daddoo ordinance. The overall height scale and footprint of the proposed outbuilding is larger than what is typically allowed under the design guidelines. The proposed footprint is approximately 920 square feet. While this is over 500 square feet smaller than the footprint of the historic building with the new addition, it is 170 square feet larger than what is typically allowed. So typically, we, for an outbuilding, we would say 750 square feet. They are proposing a footprint of 920 square feet. The outbuilding, as you can see, is two stories with an eve height of 17 feet 4 inches and a ridge height of 26 feet 5 inches. By comparison, the historic house is one story with an eve height of 11 feet 6 inches and a ridge height of about 19 feet 3 inches. So when taking in grade into consideration, the proposed height of the outbuilding is about six feet taller than that of the historic house. So typically, commission limits outbuildings to a height of 25 feet or the height of the historic house, which is less. In this case, staff is recommending that the height be reduced just slightly to 25 feet. Again, it's 26 feet 5 inches, so lowering it by just about 17, 18 inches, just to meet that 25-foot height, which is typically what is required as a maximum height for outbuildings. So staff is supportive of the fact that the outbuilding is taller in overall height and in the number of stories, and the fact that the footprint exceeds a typical limit by about 170 square feet for two reasons. The new outbuilding is combined with a minimal addition. So one, you know, we found that, like, because separating the outbuilding out and making that larger had less of an impact on the historic structure, having a small historic addition, a small addition to the historic house combined with a larger outbuilding, we thought was an appropriate way to kind of treat the historic structure. Another reason that staff is okay with the two-story scale is because of the unique character of South Music Row. The composition of South Music Row is unique in that it was historically a residential neighborhood, but many, if not most, of the buildings have been used and adapted for other uses since the 1950s. The broader Music Row area is a mix of office and multifamily buildings in a variety of forms and a variety of eras. Rear yards in this district are typically parking areas, so the commission in the past has approved new construction in the rear yard that takes up more of the, more area of the lot and larger in scale than would be appropriate in another district like Lachlan Springs or Belmont Hillsborough. The rear structure will be entirely detached and separated from the house by about 15 feet 6 inches, and therefore, will not directly impact the historic house as a larger addition would. In this case, staff again finds that the smaller addition with a larger outbuilding has less of an effect on the historic house and the historic context than a larger addition with a smaller outbuilding would be. In addition, because the outbuilding is located over 100 feet back from the house, from the street, its impact on the historic character of 16th Avenue South will be muted. Staff, again, is asking that the height be reduced to no taller than 25 feet from average grade to keep the overall height and form in check. The structure is larger than the 750 square feet that is typically allowed. It's two stories behind a one-story historic house and is several feet taller than the historic house. It also does not meet the base zoning rear setback. So staff finds that just reducing it by about the 17, 18 inches to 25 feet will help keep the overall scale of the structure more in keeping with historic area and the design guidelines. So here are just some additional drawings. Again, this is the addition, which would typically just be a staff-level permit, but we included it since it's part of the overall project. And here are the other facades for the outbuilding. So in summary, staff is recommending approval with these conditions. Staff approve all windows and doors, the roof color, the HVAC location. Staff approve the location of the utility meters, and finally, five, which is, I think, the big one in question, is that the outbuilding be reduced in height, so its average eve height from grade is no taller than 25 feet. With these conditions, staff finds the proposed addition in rear structure to meet sections 2B1 and 2B2 of the design guidelines. The applicant is here, but happy to answer any questions before then.
Any for Melissa?
Melissa, if, sometimes we don't see these, but if the applicant were to propose a parking pad in the front yard, we would have purview over that, correct?
As part of this project, yes. It's kind of a gray area if they were to do it after the project was completed, because we don't technically review paving in and of itself, so.
Perhaps that might be a...
Recommendation?
...admonition to the applicant. Since we're not reviewing it and it's not presented, maybe we can say that it shouldn't be there.
Applicant, thank you for waiting.
Hi, I'm Caitlin Smouse, 912 Bailey Street. I'm the architect for the project. Just wanted to address the parking question really fast. So there is a driveway that's going to continue from 16th all the way back to the alley, so there's enough space between the front of the historic house and the back of the new building to allow for five cars to park along the side there. And zoning code for two residences requires four parking spaces for this lot, so that's accommodated, as well as street parking. And also, the grade is way too steep in the front to have any sort of parking pad, so that would not happen. First of all, we're, we're pretty happy with all of these recommend, most of these recommendations. We know this is kind of a unique situation. This is on 16th Avenue. This is in Music Row. This is not, you know, as Melissa said, in Lachlan Springs or Belmont Hillsborough. It's not your typical kind of residential zoning. That being said, it is zoned OR 20, and this, I would like to argue that this is not an outbuilding. Outbuilding itself is not actually defined in the guidelines, but the way it's described is that it's an accessory structure that serves a primary structure on the lot, and with the way this is zoned, I would just like to argue that there's really not a primary structure on this lot. They're both primary structures. And so I think calling this an outbuilding is not quite right, and then taking all of these guidelines for an outbuilding and saying, you know, we can go larger, we can go, you know, these other guidelines that aren't going to be applied, but then pulling the height one out and saying that one does apply seems a little arbitrary to me. So we submitted this for kind of initial review about a week and a half before the submission deadline, and we're given some feedback on form and given some feedback on location on the lot, and we worked with staff and made those changes. We were never given any feedback on the height, and even after we submitted it, we're told it would be on consent. Everything was fine, and then a couple days later, we're told that this one, one guideline was going to apply for the height, and then we had to bring it down to 25 feet. So to me, that just seems like an arbitrary guideline to pull out of the outbuilding guidelines when none of the other ones seem to be an issue here. And then I think you can see on this site plan, or kind of site elevation, that the grade does drop so much in the front that, you know, you're never going to see the difference between 25 feet and 26'5. But we really do want to keep that historic house, you know, intact. It's on Music Row. That's not a typical, you know, we're in the overlay, obviously, but that's not a typical thing that's happening in Music Row anymore, so even if it is very short and small, it's remaining as it is. That's all I have. So if you have any questions, please let me know.
And we do appreciate that preservation of the historic house, because it's, you know, less and less in that area.
Yeah.
Okay. Any questions to the applicant? Open public hearing?
Hi, my name's Kristoff Jamar. I live at 1609 Villa Place, which is adjacent across the alley to this property. I only heard about this a few days ago. I'm only seeing it for the first time now. I'm concerned about the precedent that it sets. The applicant had processed recently a request for an Airbnb application, which I know is not your concern. I didn't want to oppose that because I agree that people should be able to do what they want to do, but at the time, I didn't know that they were going to build this huge structure right behind my property. And so, you know, one and a half feet doesn't make a difference. It makes a huge difference to me and having basically a mini hotel in my backyard. So I'm concerned about, you know, it says in the letter that I got that you make these variances based on historic precedent. I don't know what the historic precedent is on that alley. I don't see any properties that come that far out. So I'm concerned about the precedent that you might be setting by approving this. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll close public hearing. Let's go to the nitty-gritty. 25-foot versus 26 and a half. Comment, Mr. Mosley? Comment, Mr. Mosley?
I just, wow. I think, yeah, 26 and a half to 25 is, I would have, yeah.
That's not your, okay, not your worry?
No, I'm just, wow. Surprised it is where it is.
I don't know if this is what Mr. Mosley isn't saying, but, yeah, I guess I'm surprised at just the, just the general size of it at all. You know, and, I mean, I understand, you know, it's a little bit different context. I don't know if I've ever come across one in this district for South Music Row since I've been on the commission. So, you know, as I was looking into it, you know, so it is a different context, but, you know, it's still, I think that's why they, you know, enact the guidelines as to, and while I do appreciate the historic structure, as staff noted, you know, being, you know, a relatively small addition, I mean, this is, this is a pretty big structure in the back, you know, and I just, I don't know if the, even in my opinion, just lowering it a couple feet really helps at all. And I don't know, I just, if we were to look at this in any neighborhood, we would just immediately say, this is way too big. So I don't know. That's another thing that I'd like other commissioners to rein in on, weigh in on, is, you know, does it being, you know, in a commercial district, is that, is that what changes are of letting all these things go bigger than they've ever been allowed? That's, that'd be my question to you all.
Just right now, I guess I'm just pretty, you know, comfortable with what staff has recommended for how to, you know, to change the height of it. Other than, I do understand your point, it does seem bigger, but I, just kind of following the guidelines, that's kind of the only thing I, I guess I would, right now, I just agree with staff recommendation on their method of bringing it down.
And I don't, I don't necessarily have a problem with the staff's recommendation. I do think 25 seems sufficient, as arbitrary as it might seem to the applicant. I think a tremendous amount of quarter has already been given. Be careful what you ask for. So I stand by it. I'm surprised that it is what it is, but that doesn't make it wrong.
Do we compare this with other historic, I mean, did we, did we do that in the recommendation where we compare it with other historic structures in the vicinity?
Not the outbuildings usually. Usually the outbuildings, you are much larger than historic outbuildings, but I would say to the gentleman's concern about precedent, this district has been in place for a while, but you haven't seen very much, so this could set precedent. We were sort of taking the track of, hey, this is different. Yes, in terms of form, it's the same as the residential districts that you look at, but it is primarily a commercial use. So maybe bigger sizes are appropriate here. However, this building, this lot does back up to residential lot. And so I would encourage you to look at it carefully. The guidelines do read similar to all the other guidelines that outbuildings, and staff does believe this is an outbuilding, should be more subordinate to the historic building.
I think, you know, the other, the other side of this coin would be if it weren't this building as a secondary structure or the building behind the building as an application, if it were on the historic structure, you know, I might have the same, the same wow reaction to it. So I don't know that, that, again, this is necessarily the wrong solution for this, for what would be permitted in this district. It is, does provide deference to preserving and providing, as the staff analyzed and stated, very modest addition to an otherwise preserved historic structure in the district, which is
Which is great.
Yeah, it's the compromise a bit.
I'll just take a stab. I mean, I'm, I'm just, I just make a motion that we approve the project based on staff recommendations.
There's a motion.
Second.
There's two seconds. All in favor of the motions?
Aye.
None opposed?
Opposed.
Oops, we have one opposed. The motion carries. Yep? Okay. Oh, okay.
Okay. Next, we have 2137 Ashwood Avenue. I was turning your mics by accident. 2137 Ashwood Avenue is a non-contributing structure within the Hillsborough, West End Neighborhood Conservation zoning overlay. Staff has issued an administrative permit for demolition. This is an application for infill. The immediate historic context consists of one and one-and-a-half-story houses. These range in height from about 17 to about 29 feet tall. The contributing houses here are on the left of the subject property, and these are to the right, and these are across the street. The proposed infill is a tall one-and-a-half-story house with a total height of about 30 feet. And you may hear several different numbers kind of thrown around. It really all depends on where you measure. I really wanted to compare apples to apples here, so I went out and measured. This house they're proposing is about 30 feet if you measure from grade on the side to the top of the ridge. So that's how I did it, and that's how I measured the one next door, which we'll talk about here in a second. But it does make a difference, and you might hear a couple different numbers, so I just wanted to clarify that. Okay, so the historic house to the left here measures about 26 feet tall when I measured it at the same place. So the proposed infill will sit about four feet taller than this house next door. The house on the other side is one of the tallest in the street, and it's about 29 feet tall, so the infill will be taller than this house as well. Staff recommends the overall height be pulled down at least one foot. The proposed eves are about 16 feet from finished floor. This eve height creates a second-story knee wall with shingled wall facing the street below the eve line. This is not a typical historic element, and staff recommends that those eve heights be pulled down at least two feet to eliminate that knee wall. The foundation is tall, as seen here, but that is consistent with historic houses on this block. As usual, the foundation height will be field-checked by staff. MHCC usually requires that the front setback for infill be the average of the historic house on either side. In this case, though, the historic house to the right, shown in purple, is setback further than the other historic houses in the block, which are in green there. So staff finds a proposed setback of the infill, which I've indicated in pink, would be appropriate as it aligns with the majority of the historic houses on the block. The materials are appropriate with final staff review and approval. The house has a cross-gabled roof form with clipped gables and a 12/12 pitch. As seen here, the west elevation has a shed roof to dormer that opens up onto a balcony. Such balconies have been approved in the past for infill when the decker porch is hidden behind a pitched roofing. In this case, the railing is not a pitched roof but a wall. Staff finds it to be appropriate as the material will match that of the two gable field walls on either side, and the overall width is minimal at about 16 feet. On the east elevation, there's another shed roof dormer. This one is a wall dormer. Wall dormers are not typically historic features, but they have been approved in the past on secondary elevations for infill when they do not project further than the main wall, and staff finds this one to be appropriate. In conclusion, staff recommends approval of the infill with the following conditions: the ridge height shall be lowered by at least one foot; the primary eve height shall be lowered at least two feet; the front setback will be verified in the field; the finished floor height will be verified as well; staff will approve the materials; and the HVAC and utility meter locations shall be approved by staff. The applicant is here and would like to speak. Do you have questions for me?
Not at the moment. Thank you.
I'm at 912 Bailey Street. I'm the architect for this project. I know that a letter came through from the neighbor to the right of this house that mentioned that they would like to see staff recommendation approved, and I just wanted to point out quickly, I went out and tried to measure as well, and the numbers were pretty similar. That house is marked on the height map that is used for a lot of these projects at 29 feet, which is what we're proposing for, for our house. So we're simply trying to match the house next door with, with what we're designing here. There's a lot of, even as Jenny pointed out, there's a little bit of confusion with, or just clarity needs to be given to where heights are measured from. All of the guidelines typically say average grade, and so, yes, there are different places that you can measure. If you measure directly from the maximum height, you know, you can get a different number than if you measure from average grade, but the reason average grade is important is because on a site like this, it slopes from back to front pretty, pretty steeply, almost five feet, I think. So at the front of the house, we do have almost four feet out of the ground, which is consistent with the houses around it. At the back of the house, where we're pretty much at grade, we're only about 26 feet from grade. So that's kind of, that's what we're working with, with the site, with the varying heights that we're, the numbers that are kind of getting thrown around for that. Let's see. The other thing that I wanted to point out is that the house next door, which is 26 feet tall, likely if that project came before you, it would be allowed to have a two-foot ridge raise on it because it's a very typical house, a very typical one-story, sort of, not quite a bungalow, I guess, but it probably, it has a very short attic, and those are the type of projects that are typically allowed to have a ridge raise. Given a ridge raise, it would move from 26 to 28 feet. So, you know, again, this isn't completely out of the realm of something that gets approved on a site like this, as far as the height goes. The last thing I wanted to point out is that, as opposed to the house next door, which was built 100 years ago, we're building with current construction methods, which require, you know, 2x12 floors instead of 2x6s, 2x10 rafters instead of 2x4s. So, you know, that just automatically adds height to current construction versus construction from 100 years ago, and so it's not completely out of the realm of possibility to add a foot or two to current construction versus old construction and still fit into the context around, around the project. I think that's all I wanted to say. Do you have any questions for me?
Not at the moment.
Okay, thank you.
Open public hearing? Anyone else? All right, close public hearing. Commissioners discussion.
I mean, it sounded like to me that the applicant and staff are on the same page about having the ridge height of the roof match at least the tallest house on the street.
Yes or no? I mean, it
I don't know if it's really a yes/no question. First of all, we can't really, we don't have an exact measurement on the one right next door. He and I both went out and tried to measure it. There's not really an overhanging eve. It's hard to figure out. We would really prefer that all new construction not match the tallest house on the block. So we're asking that they reduce this by one foot, which we think will put them roughly comparable to that one. We're not exactly sure the exact height of that one. So we're asking, we're asking them to reduce the height a little bit, and they would prefer not to.
Accuse myself from the conversation as I was away for a piece, and you still were.
Okay, we're accusing, and mostly.
You know, seeing that, it's been, you know, it's on the wider end, it's, you know, if not taller, you know, as tall as, it's already on the widest end of the scale, you know, for this neighborhood, I just, you know, I do agree that the, it's too, it's just too large. The scale's too large, scale amassing is too large. So, you know, if staff, you know, thinks that, you know, ridge height, you know, and the height be reduced, then I'm fully on board with that.
Me too. I'm with staff recommendation for it. I make a motion that we approve based on staff recommendations.
Second?
There's a motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? Okay, thank you.
Stratford deferred, so that brings us to 712 Fatherland. The existing house here at 712 Fatherland is a circa 1895 house that contributes to the character of the Edgefield Historic Preservation zoning overlay. There is an existing garage along the alley, and this is an application to add a second floor to that garage and to create a dada. The proposed dada meets all the guidelines for setbacks, materials, square footage, dormers, design, et cetera. The only issues are with the height. This is kind of similar to the case we had earlier on Woodland. The guidelines state that the ridge height of an outbuilding can be as tall as 25 feet but cannot be taller than the ridge height of the primary house. The proposed ridge height is about 23 feet 6 inches, and applicant intends to match the ridge of the primary structure. It looks like the ridge of the actual house may be shorter than this, so we just want to clarify that the overall height needs to be verified, and the ridge of the outbuilding may not exceed the ridge of the primary house. The historic house is a tall one-story with eve heights that are approximately 15 feet high as measured from foundation height. The applicant proposes to meet this eve height. However, in the past, the commission has interpreted the guidelines to mean that when a historic house is one or even one and a half stories, the eve heights on the outbuilding are limited to 10 feet. Therefore, staff is recommending the eve height in this case be reduced to a maximum of 10 feet. So our recommendation is for approval with the following conditions: staff shall approve the roof color, windows, doors, and garage doors; the ridge height shall not exceed the ridge of the main house as measured from finished floor; and the maximum eve height shall be 10 feet. The applicant is here and would like to speak. Do you have questions for me first?
Thanks, Jenny. Applicant?
I'm Rich McCoy. I'm at 125 South 11th Street, 37206. I want to thank Jenny for helping me through this process, and thank the commission for Basically, we are in, okay with the recommendation summary, except for the eve height, which is what we're here to, to discuss for some relief. As she, as Jenny stated, the existing house and the, and the eves on that house are at 15 feet. It is a single-story, but in an exception and within the neighborhood as well. There's a lot of bungalows around that are also one, one-and-a-half-story that have a much lower, lower eve height associated with those. We are reusing an existing garage at the back of the property in the location. The square footage of that garage is under 600 square feet. We are permitted to go with the, with the size of the property to 1,000 square foot dada or outbuilding in that location. In order to reuse that existing footprint, we do need, we do feel like we need to raise the eve height or the bearing height a little bit higher in order to accommodate the internal stairs that we're adding that are enclosed to accommodate that dada. We feel like that the relief of the eve height is better in keeping with the guidelines as it addresses the first section of the guidelines themselves, height and scale of outbuildings. There's a number of ways to define scale inside of, inside of this, inside of the guidelines. What we're asking is for some relief in the height as opposed to going to a full 1,000 square foot amassing that would, in addition, be able to have another 750, or, I'm sorry, 500 square feet of living space above that, that same amount of area. We feel like the guidelines and the condition of the scale would, would make more sense within the context of the existing outbuildings. There is a outbuilding that is further down the alley in this same block, oh, I'm sorry, in the, I believe it's in the 800 block of Fatherland, that is a full-on 1,000 square feet footprint with the 500 added to the top and the dormers, and it's much larger. And we feel like that if we keep our outbuilding to that 600, 600 square foot and have some additional height to it, that we feel like the scale matches. We're not exceeding the scale of the existing house, which is the way it's outlined in the front of the guidelines, and that's, that's where we're kind of going with it. I believe that's all I've got for today. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Discussion?
Just a quick question for Jenny or staff, whoever might want to jump in. The, what the applicant just stated about the 1,000 square foot versus reusing, can you just, I was trying to just, you know, read through the guideline, but you just probably know it offhand, like the math or what that...
He does. The lot is big enough that they could have a 1,000 square foot outbuilding. However, they couldn't have it in that location because they're too close to the side setbacks. So if they were going to have 1,000 square feet, you would either need to give them a setback determination, or they would need to just start anew and build further into the lot. Does that make, does that answer your question?
Yeah, yeah, I was just...
Yeah, yeah. So where he is, he's fine. They just want to reuse the existing structure. And they're fine in terms of square footage. They could have much more square footage if they weren't using the footprint they have.
Got it. Okay, so that is kind of confirming some things.
May have missed it, but the, how much of a difference would that be from what's there? I guess I'll, Jenny, do you know that for the 10? And I'm surprised, sorry if you already said it.
No, no, you're fine. So their total square footage is about 670 as they're proposing it. That includes a little porch they're adding on.
Okay, I'm sorry, the eve height?
Oh, the eve height.
Eve height.
Yeah. You want...
They're proposing, the existing house has, it's about 15-foot eves. There's a lot of different eves. If you look, kind of, there's a lot going on there. About 15 feet in there. We're saying it should be 10.
So you're basing that like maybe on the tallest or an average, the tallest eve height?
Kind of an average.
We do kind of, like I said, there's, I mean, you've got that little tower, you've got two different eves there in the front, because there's that bay that projects and has an eve. So it's kind of 15-ish, we felt comfortable was an average. But again, we didn't get too much into the math because we felt like the requirement was 10, so.
Any other comments?
I could see it being lower. I don't know if it has to be five feet lower, though.
Yeah, I mean, I commend the applicant, you know, again, for using, you know, reusing the, what's there and this, you know, generally a small footprint. You know, and I, in Jenny's presentation, she said that the 10 feet is based on the original house being one or one and a half stories, correct? So whether or not, you know, this, I don't know all eve heights, but whether or not this house, you know, has, it reads to me, you know, it's all up to the eve, you know, there's not a big roof structure on this original house. So, you know, again, I don't, I think I'm kind of just going to mirror what you just said. The fact that it's a small footprint, you know, maybe we could give a little more on the eve height, you know, I don't know. Seeing as it, if it, you know, isn't, I know there's a lot of eves on the original house, but if it isn't taller than the eve height of the original house, you know, just making it come down.
Yeah.
In this specific case, you know, I don't, I don't see, that has to be 10 feet, personally.
What, what that dimension is, I'm not sure.
Architects will win.
There's so many different ones, but if the average is 15, maybe it's two feet, you know, I don't know, it's kind of arbitrary of me saying two feet, but...
Wait, does this give some questioning to the, you know, admin, you know, our staff when we're, we want to be random about how we, how we view these things. So we need to be really careful how that opinion might be.
Yeah.
Makes it difficult and challenge for the next, the next applicant that's going to come and go the same scenario, similar scenario, not the same, because we don't look at things the same.
So, Robin, if, if we were, we don't want to, we believe it should be shorter, but maybe not that much shorter. How would we, is there a basis that we could use that would be more consistent? Or, you know, if the average is 15, is it, you know, any feedback from that, I guess?
How do we determine the 10-foot? Maybe let's go with that first.
Well, the, the way you have determined it on other projects is if the building is one or one and a half stories, then the outbuilding should be one or one and a half stories, and the maximum eve height on those sized buildings is 10.
Even if the eve height is higher on the existing building?
Billy?
I'm going to, well, I'm going to shorten my chair first, sorry. I hope nobody's watching. I think in the context, this is a very utilitarian outbuilding, so check, it meets, meets that. Just in terms of the eye test and looking at the uniqueness of this particular historic structure, 10 almost sends it, I mean, in my mind could send it into, these things are not, they're less similar, they're, they're less in keeping, just passing the eye test. I don't know if 15.6 is right or whatever it is, but, or if 12 is right, but those, it seems very divergent from, from the house. And I think because it is one smaller, 10 is, 10 is, I think, a mechanism to not have, just to not have these outbuildings sort of swell and be ginormous. I think because of the, I would, I would pose the argument that because of the specific nature of the reuse of this, and as the applicant has stated, the reuse of the existing footprint at 576 square feet excluding the porch, and that the house exhibits a, a unique eve height as compared to other structures, if there were, if there were a time that it were appropriate, I think it would be here. And the next applicant that comes to is like, yeah, where's your 600 square foot garage? You've got seven, you know, you're maxed in every possible way. No, you know, but I, I'm not to discount what, what anyone has said before, but I, I think in, in, this one passes the, the eye test to me. And then when you drill down to some of those specifics, with the exception of 10 feet on the eve, that's just, those are my feelings about it.
Can't disagree with that.
They don't put a check mark in the guidelines that says, does it pass the eye test also?
No. And the height of that building, the height of that building, I mean, it does say in our italicize that, you know, the one and one and a half story is 10-foot and 17-foot for two-story dada or outbuilding. So, you know, again, when you say the eye test, does that, I'm stretching here, I'm just having conversation, is, does that building look like it's a two-story? You know, I, I'm, I'm reaching out to...
I don't think so. I think it, it looks like a, an elongated one-story, and I think it's unique, it's not solely unique, but it is certainly one of the more unique and elongated structures in the district. I don't think I'm out of bounds in arguing that or stating that. So should, should the outbuilding, it, you know, you could, the applicant could tart up the garage and, you know, put, copy some of the architecture in the house and maybe make a more convincing visual, like, oh, this is like that, and, but they, I mean, that's not necessary. I think we're, we're not here to dictate those kinds of things. I, I feel like the house provides a little more, a little more, the eve lines on the house provide a little more space for this one to be. And again, I would, I would be less inclined to that if, if it weren't an existing structure meeting the existing footprint and smaller than the maximum. Those things all come together to make it not out of character with the guidelines and not in keeping with a subservient outbuilding.
Do we note it? Again, where, where's that line then? Between that 10-foot and 17-foot? And that we are clear on how, I mean, I think it's well, well noted that it is an unusual, unique structure that we're assessing today, so. How are we confirming our guidelines? And not some random number?
To take another, to take another approach at this, you know, we speak in the guidelines about roof forms not contrasting greatly with, you know, with, with others in the neighborhood, but specifically, I think, with, with the house that it relates to. If you want to take a deep dive into this one, the slopes on, on the house are more in keeping with, in, in the applicant's, as is application, with the slopes on the house. If you take that thing and rake it out at, at, to meet 10 feet, it looks like a chalet that is less in keeping with this particular house, in my opinion.
Actually, thought about that, like, how does that 10-foot look squatty or, you know, out of character? I, I get that.
So that's, that gets to a guideline.
Right. And, and what, what that, I don't want it sounded to be random so that we're... Robin, can you help us get to a point where we're...
It sounds like you have it laid out. The proposal is a utilitarian building. The principal house is unique with a unique eve height. The proposal is a small building, smaller than the maximum allowed, and the building is in keeping with historic context are the things I was hearing. It's why this project's different.
Yeah. Thank you for that.
So on, with respect to 712 Fatherland Street, I make a motion to approve with the staff's recommendation, accepting item three and noting that the application is supported with the taller eve height based on the eve heights of the existing house, the very modest, less than the maximum size of the maximum per garage, and that the roof form at the eve height as proposed is more in keeping with the roof forms on the house that it is, you know, is on the same lot as.
Okay, and do we have a...
Second.
...maximum eve height on that? Did he say, what was the proposed by the applicant?
15.6 is what I read on the documents.
Let's be really clear on that, too. 15, 15 foot 6 inches is the maximum eve height, okay?
So I'm in it.
All right. There's a motion?
Second.
There's a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? None? The motion carries. Thank you. Three more.
Next is 1506 Boscobel. You hear me? There we go. Okay. 1506 Boscobel is a vacant lot in the Lachlan Springs Overlay. This particular block of Boscobel has very little historic context and was added to the overlay in 2014. At that time, it was understood that infill on this block would follow the existing context rather than the historic context of the larger neighborhood. The existing context consists primarily of large, two-to-three-story, single-family houses and duplexes, such as those seen here. The proposed infill will be two stories tall with a partial recessed third level. The maximum height from grade is about 35 feet. The houses on the block range from about 19 to about 38 feet, so staff finds the height to be appropriate to the specific context. The width is proposed to be 44 feet wide, which is specifically permitted in this block by the guidelines. The front setback will align with the neighboring houses and should be field-checked by staff at staking. The materials, roof form, orientation, and proportion and rhythm of openings are all appropriate for this context. The applicant is proposing an attached garage in the rear elevation of the alley. Staff finds the attached garage could be appropriate in this instance because the lot is shallow and the lack of historic context creates a condition where an attached garage would not be out of place. Staff recommends approval of the proposed infill with the conditions that staff shall approve the front setback at staking, staff shall approve the materials, there shall be no paved parking in front of the house along Boscobel Street. The HVAC and utility meter locations will be approved by staff. The applicant is here, but they have agreed to these conditions, so I don't think they wanted to speak unless you had questions.
Okay.
Questions for me?
Duly noted. Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you applicants for working with staff on that. All right, is there a motion?
Make, do you need to do public hearing? I don't think there's...
Oh, yeah, let's make a public hearing, just to make sure, I've got, yeah. Open public hearing? Closed public hearing?
I didn't know if anybody...
Yes, thank you. Thank you for that.
I make a motion that we approve per staff recommendation, 1506 Boscobel.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? So the motion passes. Thank you. Thank you for reminding me. We get so deep and discouraged sometimes.
No, it's good.
No, it's always good.
Okay. The next two items on the agenda are side by side, and they've been submitted by the same applicant. So I'm just going to go ahead and present them together. They are two separate applications, though, so I believe for procedure, you will need to make two separate motions at the end. So here's the site at 1110 and 1112 Montrose Avenue. These existing structures are non-contributing, and staff does support their demolition. As you can see here, these are the last two residential lots within the overlay boundaries. Next door, there's a parking lot and a tall mixed-use development along 12th Avenue South. The applicant believes that this location should allow for increased height on the site, to transition from lower-scale houses to larger commercial construction on 12th. Staff disagrees, reminding the commission that in 2011, in a similar situation on Grantland Avenue, the commission used the height of a neighboring commercial building outside of the overlay to help determine context. Then after construction, the commission found the infill was too large, and so no longer uses buildings outside of the overlay to determine appropriate infill height. Given this, the historic context is exclusively one and one and a half story houses with a maximum height of about 24 feet. A two-foot-high foundation is common, and the average eves are about 10 to 11 feet. The house to the left here is immediately next door to the site and measures 20 feet tall. Again, I measured that one from the side at grade to the top of the ridge. And the house on the bottom is across the street from the site. That's the tallest historic house on the block, and it measures about 24 feet from grade to the ridge line. The proposal is for two one-and-a-half-story duplexes with second units facing the alley. Staff finds that the materials, roof form, orientation, and proportion and rhythm of openings all meet the guidelines. The proposed side and rear setbacks all meet the base zoning requirements. The front setback will align with the historic houses on the street to be verified by staff in the field. The width of both houses will be 40, 34 feet, which is appropriate to the block. I'm going to look at the design and the height of each separately. So starting with number 1110 Montrose, that's the interior unit, this is a tall one-and-a-half story house with a total height of more than 29 feet from grade. So approximately nine feet taller than the house next door. The eve heights are about 15 feet tall as opposed to the 10-foot eve next door. The foundation height is nearly five feet at its tallest point as compared to two feet next door. Staff finds that the overall height and scale is too tall. On the side elevation, you can see how the infill, how the depth of the infill creates that high foundation at the front due to the grade. Then the proposed house at 1112 Montrose will be even taller with a ridge height of about 32 feet, a full eight feet higher than the tallest historic house on the block. Again, the foundation height is about five feet tall. The eves here are from 13 feet to 14 feet 5 inches tall. The rear elevations mirror the fronts just with the lower foundation height, given that change in grade. So our recommendations are the same for both, though you will need to make two different motions. The overall height, we are recommending approval with these conditions. The overall height shall not exceed 25 feet tall, the eve height shall not exceed 12 feet, the finished floor height shall be consistent with the finished floor heights of the adjacent historic houses to be verified by staff in the field. Staff shall approve the front setback at staking, staff shall approve materials, and the HVAC and utility meter locations shall be approved by staff. The applicant is here and wants to speak, but first, do you have questions for me?
Thank you, Jenny.
Okay. So it's, okay, serious. And then that...
Yeah, so it's, okay, Sarah's, and then that context, perfect. Thank you very much. Caitlin Smouse, 912 Bailey Street, the architect for this project. I know Jenny said that, you know, you've looked at context before outside of the overlay, and it didn't end up that great. We did not know that specific precedent going into this, but I would still like to argue that this is definitely a transitional lot. You know, this kind of is the context around it. You can see we're right on the edge of the overlay, and 12 South is one lot away. That, you know, that building to the west of these lots is that three-story commercial building that houses Bar Taco and has residences above. And then directly to the north is a funeral home that is currently for sale on a commercial lot, and so who knows what's going to happen to that? But part of that, and you can see the back of it in the top picture on the left, part of that is a full two-story, what looks to be historic home, obviously not in the overlay, but a historic home. And then again, 12 South continues down with commercial buildings. I'd just also like to point out that this building right here, can you see that? Can't see that. The arrows? I don't know. Can I show, can I point at all? Yeah, sure. Okay. I wasn't sure if you could see on the screen. Okay, perfect. This building right here, which is, you know, in the same block north of these lots, is a very kind of rambling, very tall, historic Victorian house. And then, you know, unfortunately, we do have these, well, unfortunately for us, we do have these kind of smaller homes directly beside us and across the street. So I do think context is important here, and I know that, you know, the historic context, residential context is low, but these are very transitional lots, and, you know, 12 South isn't going anywhere. It's not going to become single-family residences anytime in the near future. So I really do think that needs to be taken into account. The other thing I really wanted to point out, so, we do a lot of work in these neighborhoods. We have submitted, I don't know, over 100 projects, maybe not 100, but we've submitted dozens and dozens of projects. So we have the advantage of having files that we can kind of refer back to. So in orange, you can see on the left, in orange is historic home at 1,000 Gilmore, and that is a block north and two blocks east of where these lots currently are. That is, and I think, actually, I was looking at it later, I aligned the window sills, I should have aligned the finished floor height, it is pretty much the exact same height, and it is actually wider than what we're proposing here. So massing-wise, we're not trying to just throw these huge things up. We're really trying to respect historic forms that already exist in the neighborhood. 12 South is full of Victorians, bungalows, it's full of brand-new homes that are a full two-stories. So we're not, we're not trying to blow things up. We're trying to be respectful of the neighborhood and have these historic forms, but, you know, the market also demands certain things, so that we can't build something with eight-foot ceilings like the cottages around us. We can't build something that has two-by-six ceiling joists, that has a seven-foot attic. You know, we, we have to build according to current standards and according to current code, so, you know, Martin said earlier, we have to have at least a 12-inch floor system, we have to have bigger rafters, you know, just the way we have to build now and with code-compliance systems, we're inherently taller than some of these historic houses. And also, I think, you know, you can kind of see in these side elevations, nope, going the wrong way. The grade does rise quite a bit from front to back, and so part of what we looked at was actually taking the front unit and pulling it down closer to grade, similar to the houses around it, but then it seemed to us that that would make it very obviously a duplex and very obviously a front-and-back situation, and not looking like one cohesive house, which is the goal of historic, you know, these duplexes built in historic neighborhoods. So we didn't want to do that. So that's definitely still an option, you know, if we need to pull the front unit down so it does, you know, go with, you know, the context a little bit more, we can do that, but that didn't seem appropriate in this instance. Yeah, and so basically, you know, the average height from grade in the rear is, I think, three feet, three feet lower, it got cut off in these images, but it's three feet lower in the rear for kind of the bungalow house, and it's about five feet lower for the Victorian house. So, I can answer any questions, but, you know, we're really trying to be respectful and respect the neighborhood and the styles around it while, you know, getting the space that we kind of need to have in this very expensive, very transitional neighborhood.
Any questions?
It sounds like, I mean, you've stated you did consider the, sort of taking the continental divide and.
Yeah.
Sending the first front house down, and you do a little hip at the back and sort of take care of.
Yeah, and I mean, that definitely could be an option, especially, you know, with that bungalow house. It just seemed that when you look at that from the side, that's pretty obviously two houses, and that seems like something historic wants to avoid, but maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, well, we're, we're often challenged with that, but I think there's more than one, more than one way to consider that, I guess, or one could argue more than one way to analyze that. If the, these houses were already here and they were kind of shut down, if you did an addition, you'd either be digging a big hole and putting up a retaining wall, or put the addition kind of into the ground, or raising it up, so.
Right.
But you've noted, again, that you're, that was a consideration.
Okay. Thank you. Open public hearing? Close public hearing? Okay, discussion? Okay, not closed? Somebody wants to come up? No? All right, all right. Okay. Nobody? All right. Yes, you do? Okay, okay. You're giving us a hard time. It's the end of the day. All right, thank you. Discussion?
I mean, I guess, I'm having, I guess I'm going back and forth in my own head of just, I do believe in transitional areas and transition between, you know, something to something different, you know, and then on the flip of the coin, I also think, but if that were the case and the rules didn't apply, then the overlay would be a block over, or not a block, a lot over. So that's, that's what, that's going through my head right now, so I'd like to hear other commissioners' thoughts on it. I mean, it is, you know, if you're looking at it and, you know, one's on one side, one's on the other, it's, you know, like that, but then, yeah, I don't know.
I was just going to say, you're, you're looking at two different types of building. You're going from commercial to residential, and I tend to agree with staff's recommendations, and, and I think the, the context is really the residential on that street, what's happening adjacent to it and what's happening across the street from it, and to transition to a completely different commercial building type. And to do that just in those two houses doesn't seem, seem like you're really accomplishing that transition, to me.
I've seen that, I know, earlier times where in East Nashville that happened, and it was like, I looked at it after the fact, and it was just so out of place, you know, a larger building context to, you know, the adjacent, even the adjacent homes were smaller, and it was just, seemed out of place. Seemed too big.
I think use and form is, between commercial and residential is not the, that's the wrong measuring stick here, and I think the justification is for height. The thing that seems out of place, and I think the applicant has, they made a conscious decision not to split the front and the back, the lot slopes. To me, the thing that would stand out the most with these houses versus the immediate context is the height of the foundation. And I think there's a pretty, staff's recommended 25 feet, and it's measured from grade, there's a pretty simple, I don't want to say pretty simple, a possible fix, if you put that on the applicant to meet that, is you just take the front and you sink it down, and you end up with some, in elevation, pure elevation, you end up with some, something further back that pops the house up in the back, the smaller house up in the back. It's going to be beyond the midpoint of the house. I think we've done that before. You know, they could come really, really close. I don't know if jamming the thing down five feet in the ground and putting the porch on the, you know, at grade, maybe, you know, probably is an oversimplification, but I think we're, if you take that approach, we're not nearly as far off as it, as it might appear from, from one to the next in the elevation. It's just my, my thoughts, that they seem pretty good a little bit, they don't seem, they are a good bit out of the ground, and it's for simplicity of construction, and as the applicant stated, they, they didn't want it to look like the house behind the house, but I think, you know, it is what it is. It's the house behind the house, and.
But yeah, I get, I mean, yeah, and then just in our photos, I mean, the immediate right, it's, the house is basically on the ground, you know, and this would be almost as tall as, I mean, the five, what was it, five feet tall, you know, that's just, that's considerable, that's a considerable foundation height. So totally, I agree with both Lee and Ben on that.
I'll go ahead and make a motion in respect to 1110.
The first one, and then we'll do both.
1110 A Montrose Avenue, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations.
There's a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? The motion passes?
And then in regards to 1112 A Montrose Avenue, I make a motion to accept staff recommendations as proposed.
Second?
There's a motion, is a second? All in favor?
Aye.
None opposed? The motion passes.
I do have a couple of news items for you. Chairman Bell was reappointed by the Metro Historical Commission to serve as your representative on this commission, and Hastings Architecture has offered their space, they're loaning us their space for Realtor Course we're planning for this October. So it's great to be in a spot that is a great example of adaptive rehab, and you will be meeting at the same location next month.
Okay. All right. Thank you, staff. Thank you, commissioners. We are adjourned. I'll put that down on my calendar here. August 22.